And assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. So will you all join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and thank you so very much. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
The Coffey Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Initially, copy of all material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, September 27, 2016.
Move second.
It's moved to second that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number two are claims. Approve of all claims processed through October 4, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
2015, 2016, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve the claims process through today. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three is a special presentation. Introduction of Jeff Cunningham, nominee for appointment to the Lancaster Visitors Promotion Committee.
Special presentation.
Told you it's special, Jeff. Well, you have two Jeffs in front of you today.
Oh, my goodness.
I know. It's overwhelming. Good morning, and I would just want to get a chance to touch on a couple of things before we walk into welcoming Jeff Cunningham to the Visitors Promotion Committee. An amazing week. Having Steve Case here yesterday was truly amazing for our community to have the founder of AOL, to have an amazing week. And what we're calling this is L-N-K DNA from the Chamber of Commerce standpoint. It's Y-P week. It's startup week. It's an amazing week for startup businesses and entrepreneurs. So we just continue the momentum, and we're so happy that despite a rainy day, that we have a lot to look forward to this week with entrepreneurs and so forth. But today, we want to bring forward a potential new member to the Visitors Promotion Committee. The Visitors Promotion Committee is a seven-member committee that oversees lodging tax collections and allocations of the Visitor Improvement Fund. We do have a current term open, which will run from November of 16 through November of 2020, and this is the seat that Julie Latimer vacated after serving two full terms. And we felt as a committee, and I think the county board would agree, that having a retail component to the committee replacing Julie is pretty essential at this point. By statute, we didn't need to do a retail person. We could have put just about anybody on the committee. But after a lot of discussions, Jeff Cunningham really kind of rose up because of his role in the Haymarket. And I'll let Jeff talk about his background. But the more, the important thing from us is looking at Jeff's service to the Haymarket District since 1996 and his role with the Haymarket Development Corp., Burlington Antiques, and that gem that is the Haymarket Farmers Market. Jeff has been one that's been instrumental in making that grow. We've had some great discussions. But with that, I'll give you Jeff Cunningham to talk a little bit about his background and field any questions.
Hi. Thank you for seeing me today. As Jeff said, my career started with a Haymarket in 86 when my wife and I opened a small gift shop, which we owned for three years. At that time, we were recruited by Telus Inc. to take over the day-to-day management operations of Burlington Antiques, which we did for five years. At the time, the lease came up. Telus needed that space to expand their brewery and restaurant, so my wife and I purchased the business, relocated across the street. I've been in the Haymarket 20 years. I wear many hats now with my job with LHDC, plus the antique store and Farmers Market. I totally understand the importance of keeping the city vibrant by bringing in conventions, doing events, anything to keep people in town that are here already and to bring new faces in. So as a business owner, I've seen the impact. It does great for us. I'm just happy to be considered for this position, and I thank you for your time.
Okay. Larry?
Well, you've got big shoes to fill.
Yes, sir.
But I'm sure you'll do a good job of it. And what you've done with the Farmers Market down there has just been outstanding. And being a member of Farm Bureau, we had the car show and the tractor show a couple of weeks ago, and the working relationship was just great. Like you said, anything we can do to, so people can have a good time, get to know each other, and that sense of community is something that you've, you know how important that is.
Yes, definitely.
And thanks for taking time to serve. You've got an excellent coordinator that will keep you roped in and keep you in attention to detail. But your individual ideas and attention are what make the Visitors Promotion Committee work. So thanks for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Bill?
Thank you. I agree with the other Jeff that it's good to have a retail person on this board. I've known you quite a long time.
Yes, sir.
And you have been a very, very important part of that renovation and establishment of one of the most attractive features of this city.
Thank you.
And a big generator of money, I think.
Yes, it's good.
Okay, and I really personally wanted to say, I work with a lot of people coming new into Lincoln, buying houses and so forth and so on.
Yes.
And one of the things I always say, you've got to go down to the Farmers Market in the Haymarket. And I've talked with some of them later on over a few years, and they said this is just one of the best places that there is.
Thank you very much.
Yep. So anyway, thank you for your willingness to serve on the board. And Jeff?
If I could add one more thing, too, before we kind of carry this out, is Jeff's work with the Haymarket Development Corp., they've actually applied for a Visitor Improvement Fund grant. So they understand the other side of the grant program. So we've had some discussions about, you know, he doesn't want to jeopardize his opportunity with the Haymarket Development Corp. to continue to apply for dollars, which it won't, but he understands both sides of the issue. So I think when we take a look at continued granting of these dollars, Jeff's going to be a very, very good person to have at the seat for that as well.
Okay.
Good.
Thanks.
All right. Well, any other questions? Let's proceed on to item 4A.
This is new business, appointment of Jeff Cunningham to the Lancaster County Visitors Promotion Committee for a four-year term ending June 30, 2020.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the appointment of Jeff Cunningham to the Lancaster County VPC. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.
All right. Thank you very much for your time.
You bet.
Yeah. Good luck.
Thank you.
4B is resolution in matter of witness fees pledged by Lancaster County, which have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the resolution in the matter of witness fees, unclaimed witness fees. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. C is an interlocal agreement between the City of Lincoln and Lancaster County on behalf of the Southeast Region to provide Southeast Region grant funds from NEMA to the City of Lincoln for purchases of emergency management equipment. Cost of region will be approximately $90,000.
Good morning. Jim David, Save Director, Lincoln, Lancaster County Emergency Management. I'm also here on behalf of the Southeast Region. Since Lancaster County serves as the fiscal agent and point of contact, the region has had a good working relationship with Lincoln's Bomb Squad for the past several years. I was hoping Inspector Don Gross would be here this morning. He had other commitments and couldn't make it. This agreement is just to facilitate purchases moving forward. As I said, the region recognizes the strength of the Lincoln Bomb Squad and the fact that when they are well-equipped, it truly is an asset to the entire Southeast Region. The agreement before you today is to facilitate the purchasing process moving forward. It's already been approved on the city's side. Don did that, and this is just, I guess, a matter of formality to have that process approved. So moving forward, as I said, it facilitates the purchasing process.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the interlocal agreement regarding this grant for the purchases, the emergency management equipment. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. D is an agreement between Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Election Commissioner and Steve McClatchy for the delivery of voting machines and other miscellaneous equipment to several polling locations. For the general election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2016, the county will pay $58 per polling location for the delivery service.
This is our contract that we have to deliver our auto marks and some tables and chairs to some of our polling locations. And Steve has done this for a number of years for us and does a great job.
And would you introduce yourself?
Nope. I'm David Shively. I'm the election commissioner for the county.
Okay. Yeah, Larry?
All ready for the election?
Yeah, I will get there if I get some today.
And I know you've been strapped for room for some time. Are you still storing these onsite or are they offsite?
These are actually been stored on the third floor of the Health Department, and we are moving that now because that's going to be developed for offices and so.
For parks and recreation.
To records management. We'll be, we'll be storing records management over here. They found us a nice, nice location over there for us to, to store them over there.
Good. Well, you're ahead of me. I just, just wondered what arrangement she had for when they come back. And this has been a service that they've performed for you, and you've been satisfied with the service?
We have done this since 2006, when we first were required to have the auto marks at our offices.
With that, I'd move approval.
I will second that, but I do have a really minor question. This reads, voting machines and other miscellaneous equipment. Can you give me an example of what qualifies?
Tables and chairs, primarily tables and chairs are some of our facilities that don't provide tables and chairs for our poll workers, so we, we provide those. So they, they move those as well.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Just another basic question. How many poll locations are we talking about?
About 165.
That's a lot.
We make it convenient.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve this agreement regarding the delivery of the voting machines, another miscellaneous equipment. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. E is a collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 29. Term of the agreement is September 1, 2016, to August 30, 2018.
Morning Commissioners. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. We've concluded negotiations with FOP 29 that represents the deputies for Lancaster County Sheriff's Office. The agreement is for two years, 2.25% increase for the first year, and a 2.0% increase for the second year. That was the only significant issue of negotiations.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this collective bargaining agreement with the Fraternal Order of the Police Lodge Number 29. Any discussion? Larry?
And Doug, we appreciate you and your office, and we also appreciate FOP 29 for, I think, as you described it Thursday, when you went, a very professional organization to deal with. That's what negotiations are about, and you're trying to find some middle ground and achieve it. So congratulations to both of you on this successful contract.
Thank you. You're right. It's a great group of men and women that serve the county very, very well. Thank you very much.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve this collective bargaining agreement. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. F is an agreement between Graham Research Consultants and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office for training sessions to be conducted on October 12, 2016. Cost of county is $5,625.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this agreement with the Graham Research Consultants in Lancaster County. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. G is acceptance of a temporary retirement buyout program application and agreement between the County of Lancaster, Nebraska, and Kevin Poland, an employee of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office and a member of Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 29. Mr. Poland's resignation is effective October 26, 2016.
Okay. Mr. McDaniel's?
Probably need a little explanation.
Mm-hmm.
Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This temporary buyout retirement for Deputy Poland is established by Article 30 of the FOP contract with the county. It provides for 100% payout of sick leave.
And could you explain a little bit with the temporary nature of this, why it's deemed temporary, and when the actual resignation doesn't probably take place till October 26?
Well, it's temporary for the duration of the contract itself.
Oh, okay.
So that's why it's, it's deemed temporary in nature. So it's only for the duration of each labor agreement that we negotiate.
Got you.
Got you.
Okay.
Then I'd move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this acceptance of the temporary retirement buyout program for Kevin Poland. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. 4H is a cooperative agreement with the U.S. Department of Interior, U.S. Geological Survey for joint funding of water resources investigations. The agreement is for the operation and computation of records for forest rain flow gauging stations, which are Salt Creek, Little Salt Creek near Lincoln, Stevens Creek near Lincoln, and Rock Creek near Suresco. The county will pay $12,635 for the services. Term of agreement is October 1, 2016, through September 30, 2017.
Good morning.
Good morning. Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I felt it was important for me to discuss the importance of these gauges this morning with you. There are several gauges located within the county. As, you know, we have experienced in engineering and in our society, the birth of big data, and how to use big data, and how to use big data to protect the public. The new, the new gauging system actually has the ability for you to go in and sign up to get a text message at the water level of your choice. So if you live near one of these gauges, or if you've experienced flooding, you can actually get a text message alert once the gauge reaches a certain, a certain height. And so these gauges have become very important to us. We monitor them in the Emergency Operations Center so that we know. We know based on the Stevens Creek gauge when water is going to go over Highway 6 so that we can prepare for that in advance. And I just, I just wanted you to know how we're using this data and how important these gauges are to us, not just in Lancaster County, but also in City of Lincoln.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this cooperative agreement. I do have a question, Pam. Excuse me. So this means, then, that citizens living in that area can request to receive a text message based upon the height of, so that's, okay, is that correct?
That is correct. So you can actually look on the website, and it will list the last five historic highs of that creek. So you can choose based on those heights, or you can choose based on what the flood stages noted on the website are. It's also, of course, interesting to note that in many cases with these gauges, in the last two years, we've had three or four of the five high historic readings, so.
Well, that's going to be a big help to citizens living in that area.
Absolutely.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we approve this agreement. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Abstain.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. I is an agreement with Solvo Solutions LLC for professional consulting services to establish caseload standards for Lancaster County Attorney's Office. The county will pay $90 per hour for up to 170 hours of work. Cost of county is not to exceed $15,300. Term of agreement is December 1, 2014, through June 30, 2017.
Good morning. Joe Kelly, Lancaster County Attorney. All of these funds come from the County Attorney's Federal Drug Forfeiture Fund, so there's no taxpayer money involved. This is a continuation of the project we've been doing with Dr. Harian at UNL for about two years now. We have not completed that project for attorney time recording. Simply put, the attorneys are in the process and have been for almost nine months of recording their time on particular cases. Because we're the first prosecutor's office anywhere to use this system, we're still encountering some difficulties, so it's taken longer than we thought it would. I'll also say that two present judges also had this project on their desk before they became judges, so that's kind of slowed us up a little, too. We're moving ahead. We've got some great plans for the coming year, and that also includes obtaining a one-time, one-year grant for a person in the office to move this case forward and get us to where we need to be.
Joe, does this mean that you don't have any caseload standards now?
For prosecutors, there are none. Nationally, the defense associations and some groups have some about how many cases should be on a public defender's desk. And for that reason, you end up paying for those conflict cases when the public defender says, too many on the desk. There are no such standards for prosecutors' offices. That's part of what we're trying to establish here, and also to use it as a long-term planning tool about staffing needs. But no, there are not.
And there are no other models out there that you can look at?
No.
I do have a question, then. Can you, do you, can you give just an estimate about the number of caseloads, what the caseload might be for the attorneys, the average caseload?
Yeah, I'll tell you this. We're on schedule to set a new record for the number of total felonies filed in district court. So that's after a few of them have been weeded out in county court with either pleas or a workout situation. In district court, we're going to file probably 2,000 cases this year, a new record by several hundred. On the desk of the major felony attorneys, six of them are 30 to 50 district court cases at any given time, and another 30 to 40 county court cases at any given time. Some of those are going to end up in district court. Some of them are not going to. Those are raw numbers.
Oh, yeah.
And there's too many on the desks of all of the felony attorneys presently. Way too many.
Larry?
Are felony arrests up, or is disposition lagging behind, or?
Not sure. Chief Cassidy and I were looking at some things last week. We're going to continue that discussion, or I guess it was several weeks ago. But I don't know about arrests. I just know our filing numbers are up substantially.
Sure. That's your part of it. By the same token, your office has always operated very efficiently, but this is kind of, to have a record in a study like this will help you even fine-tune it more, I'm sure, Mr. Kelly. Then I'll move approval.
I will second it, and I have a follow-up question, kind of relating to what Larry was mentioning. Would there be a nexus between jail population? I mean, obviously, if you're looking at a higher rate of felony caseloads, wouldn't you also, I mean, more likely see an increase in jail population?
You'll see that. What everybody's going to be asking state and local level right now is whether that increase in the jail population is, it is a combination of increased number of cases or crimes filed, but the jail issue also is the number of individuals under LB 605 who are serving those.
There you go.
Community supervision probation, periods of time where they've been found to have violated their supervision. Now they're doing 30 days in our jail. And that, that number is substantial and real, but separating the two will be the chore.
And?
Go ahead, Larry.
In the study, will we be able to separate the ones that are a direct result of LB 605?
Well, not, not with this study.
Study. But you are kind of keeping track of it.
Yeah. Sarpy and Douglas and Lancaster are doing their best now to try and give those figures. There's a, there's an LB 605 meeting next week sometime. That'll be a topic because all three of the major cities are saying our jails, we're, we are not as bad off as Sarpy. Sarpy's.
Really feeling the brunt of it, aren't they?
They're, they're contracting, I think, 60 a day, 60 beds elsewhere a day. And they, like us, believe that a lot of that increase is due to LB 605 because you just, you have more individuals who are being managed in our county jail with our judges who are, who otherwise might be just have their parole revoked and be back in the penitentiary system. So it's.
Just another example of a well-meaning program, but the consequences result in an unfunded mandate from the state back to the counties.
Well, yeah. And, you know, the money's part of it. Somebody, everybody will evaluate down.
Facilities.
County, state. But the other issue is recidivism. And 605's main thrust was to reduce the recidivism, that 30 to 32% of individuals who today are walking out of the penitentiary who will be back there within two years, 30%.
30%.
So a big chore, a big chunk of LB 605 with this community supervision and this extended community supervision, two, three years sometimes, or one or two years. All of it meant to try and tackle recidivism, which is, that's a long-term measurement. You know, you aren't going to really accurately measure that for, for eight or nine years, I don't think.
Bill, and then Tom.
Joe, isn't it really hard to determine the impact of 605 on our population? I mean, you can say, okay, we have this new law. We anticipated that it was going to be a burden to us. And now if we see an increase anywhere in the population, we say, whoop, that's 605. Isn't it hard really to nail that down and to sort it out so that you say, yes, this is a result of 605, but this is not?
It is in a big way. Now, in a smaller way, you can do it this way. You can say, tell us everybody who's serving one of these 30-day sentences for having violated their community-supervised release, and just give us a raw number, and, and then say, there's 15 of those, and before 605, there were, of course, zero.
So you can measure it.
That's a measurement, but it's probably overly simplistic because those individuals might have been already discharged and committed new crimes. You know, it's, it's difficult. I mean, and everybody's trying to do it honestly, just to figure out. But 605 is having an effect.
And it is possible that 605 is having a positive effect in terms of its overall objectives. Its objective, I was there, I remember this very well. Its objective was not to push unfunded mandates onto the counties.
Oh, absolutely.
That was not the objective. And many times, laws that are passed with, with good intentions have unintended consequences. This might be one of them.
Right. And, and the, the driving force for 605 came from the somewhat unrelated issue of prison overpopulation. That was the reason that everybody was able to get together and make some big changes. And, and, and that doesn't get lost either. But I, I agree. Recidivism is what we all wanted out of 605 and still hope to get, reducing recidivism.
Tom?
So back to the question about caseloads, this is just a basic question. So when someone offends through their incarceration, through their, however the, you know, their sentence is served, is that considered one case, or is it, I mean, can you just, I guess my question is, how involved is the County Attorney's Office in cases like this that go?
On the supervised release?
Yeah.
Not terribly involved. Usually, it's those probation officers bring the violation to the judge's attention, and then that individual is really asked. The judge has said this would be a 30-day jail stint for having left the county, you know, whatever, ever.
So there's not an increase?
And you have your choice. Do you want to have a hearing with that, or do you want to just agree to that 30? And if they agree, it's really very little involvement by the attorneys on either side.
Okay. So that, so the legislation doesn't really have an, on the back end, doesn't have a huge impact on the caseload on the County Attorney's Office?
No, and certainly for the County Attorney's Office. That part of it has very little effect on us.
I do have one question regarding the caseload also. I do have one question regarding the caseload also. There's a tremendous number of cases, and particularly of the felony cases, for the attorneys. Do you have sufficient clerks to help out in the research?
Well, we have as many as we can handle and manage, which is six, and that helps. But, and I'm going to be coming to see you sometime soon about overall, the future, and probably making a request for an added, for an additional felony attorney. But I want to do it when I have some other figures put together. But clerks help, but not that much.
Okay, all right. Okay, any further discussion? Otherwise, please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four J is an offer from Brian Hill for real property no longer serving the county purpose, generally located at 2201 South 17th Street, Lincoln, Lancaster County, Nebraska.
I'd move approval. We do have a copy of the agreement. Mr. Durbin has explained it to us, and I see Kent Seacrest is, is in the audience, and I read it over this morning. It, it looks good to me. We just need to get those easements released so that Ken can complete the sale.
Second.
Moving second, that we accept this offer from Brian Hill for real property no longer serving county purpose. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. K is a grant contract with Youth for Christ, Inc., an amount of $10,000 for funding of the Parent Life Program. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2017.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director for Lancaster County. The first contract that I have, the Parenting Life Program, this is a program through Youth for Christ. I've been there several times to monitor and visit this program. Basically, what it does is it provides support and a mentoring component to youth who either are pregnant or who have toddlers, babies with them. They provide transportation to their meeting spot, they provide a cooked meal, they pick up the moms, they encourage dads to attend too, if dads can't be there. Lots of times, the grandmothers come. The last time that I visited there, I had the pleasure of sitting down with a mother, two toddler, and then her mother, so three generations at the table, and the grandmother started crying and thanked me for allowing their child to go through this. She said that her child was at the place where she was going to drop out of school. She was being encouraged to drop out and get her GED, in fact. And she found this program, she was offered the support through the mentoring component. She graduated a semester ahead of her class and ended up on the honor roll, and she credited this program for that. So a very important program.
Bill?
I, I have no doubt this is a great program. I have, from time to time, noticed these items on the agenda, and I've wondered, to what extent is this public money that might be subsidizing religious activity?
And this, the whole time I was there, and I even asked the kids, they've never, they don't do church, they don't pray, they don't, you would not know that it was through Youth for Christ if it wasn't being held in a church. It's being held in the fellowship hall in a church. However, with that being said, this goes hand in hand with what the federal government pushes a lot, with partnering with religious sectors. And the reason that they push that is because, to be quite honest, that's where the money comes in. And, I mean, we're giving this program, what, I think it's $10,000. This program costs a lot more than $10,000. And that additional funding comes from the support of that religious organization that's hosting it. At no time during that, again, was there any mention of, let's all pray together, let's come in and do church. It's more of a supportive atmosphere. There were members of that congregation there that cook for these mothers, that bring in, oh, they had just a table full of diapers there, and different outfits for the kids that the moms could pick up. So again, reaching out into the community and trying to pull in other sources of revenue other than tax funding. And again, by us giving this $10,000, we're getting a lot, lot more than we're, we're paying for.
Okay, and I basically have to agree with you, because when, you know, the, the faith-based organizations really do provide a lot of support. I know that at the church that I go to, we do have various programs that help moms, unmarried moms, and so I think that this is really excellent. Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Did you have a comment?
I was going to make.
Okay. Okay. Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Youth for Christ, Inc. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four L is a grant contract with Hub Central Access Point for Young Adults, Inc., an amount of $27,150 for funding for Hub's Back on Track program to increase school engagement for youths ages 16 and 17 who are obitually truant, credit deficient, and in danger of falling off track to graduate on time. Hub will document $20,000 of non-federal matching funds used on the program. Term of the contract is July 1st, 2016, through June 30th, 2017.
Okay, and this particular funding source is a federal grant that's funneled through the Crime Commission. It's to serve 50 youth ages 16 and 17. Staff from the Hub actually have offices located at Southeast Lincoln High, East and Northeast High Schools. They're part of the student achievement teams where they discuss students who maybe are falling behind in credit hours, or who are missing school, who are truant often. And the reason, I guess, that the juvenile justice system cares about truant youth is for a number of reasons, but primarily, there's been a lot of studies done. That is the first indicator of problems in a homeless truancy. And it's often the first time that we see kids come into the system in a troubled type of atmosphere. So the, so building those supports on the front end hopefully will keep them out of coming through our juvenile justice system.
And ending up into the adult system that we just had a very detailed comprehensive discussion about. So thanks for your work, Sarah.
Do you have a motion?
No, we don't.
I move that we approve this.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this grant contract with Hub Central Access Point. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Stand.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries three yes, one abstention. M is an amendment to county contract C-16-238 with one source, the background check company. For the annual service employment and volunteer background investigation services, the amendment renews the contract from October 18th, 2016, through October 17th, 2017. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Four N is an amendment to county contract C-15-149 with Redwood Toxicology Laboratory, Inc., using the state of Minnesota NMCAP contract number MMS-14033 for drug and alcohol screening products and services. The amendment extends the contract from October 1st, 2016, through September 30th, 2017. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed $51,500.
I mean, I'll, I'll move approval, but I do have a question about this. I don't know if.
Okay. Is, is there, I don't, yeah.
Well, I'll give a second. I need some more information, too.
This is an amendment, so.
My question has to do with, in the contract, does it specify how many per, how much cost per, per case?
I would have to refer to the original contract. It's just an amendment, and I can get that information for you next week.
Go ahead and vote on it. I think it's an extension of a contract. I'm okay with it.
It is an extension of a contract, exactly. Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this amendment. Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. O is an amendment to county contract C-16-0008 with United Postal Services, Inc., using the state of Nebraska contract 5273304 for small package delivery services. The amendment extends the contract from August 28th, 2016, through November 27th, 2016. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $500.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with UPS. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. P is an amendment to county contract C-13-542 with Nebraska Printing Center for the anti-re requirements of envelopes and printing. The amendment renews the contract from November 1st, 2016, through October 31st, 2017. Estimated cost to county is not to exceed $30,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Nebraska Printing Center. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number five are consent items. Receive and place on file the following report. County Sheriff for August 2016. Utility permit number 1481 on Lion Windstream, Inc., to install fiber optic cable adjacent to Denroven Road. There is no cost to the county. Right-of-way contracts between Lancaster County and the following. Sandra Allington, North 190th Street and Little Salt Road, an amount of $487. David and Mary Montague, North 27th Street and Agnew Road, an amount of $1,437.40.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
I do have a question. I noticed that we have the treasurer's, we have representatives here. Did you want to speak on anything, or were you just here to look at, listen to what we approved on P, item P?
We're here just to oversee what you're approving.
Oh, okay, very good.
And I do have a public comment.
Okay, and you do have a comment?
Well, last week, Carol and I had just returned from about 14, 15 days in, in eastern France, and we were really hustling last week, so I didn't want to take up any time at that point. But I just wanted to say that sometimes you have to leave the country to appreciate what we have here. France is a beautiful country. It's a lot of good Charlet cattle, a lot of great vineyards, and somebody's done a lot of hard work building those castles along the Roan River over, over the years, too. But I guess one of the things that really bothered me is the tough times that the French people are going through right now. It's real easy to, to borrow money, but paying it back is what gets to be a problem. And I'm really proud of Lancaster County and what this board has done over the years. And I think at the end of this year officially, Lancaster County will be out of debt. We'll have some public building, or some JPA money into the jail to pay yet. But be careful about borrowing money for the future. Right now, France's gross domestic product only covers the payment on their debts and interest, so they don't have anything to improve roads with, or airports, or locks. They've got a wonderful river system there, and that's what Carol and I did, was go up and down the Roan River. 17 locks we went through, but in one case, they, they raised us 37 feet. And so they do a lot of shipping through there, but, you know, you're going to use those things, it isn't just to build them, it's to keep them in operation, too. So there's resources enough in this country to do what we need to do, but we've got to be careful about our spending. So that's my sermon for the day, but it's sure good to be back, and, and it's, it's great when you can land in Lincoln, Nebraska, and, and just drive a few miles home. We've got a lot to be thankful for in Lincoln, Lancaster County.
Thank you for that sermon.
Okay.
Okay.
Next is number seven announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 6th, 2016, at 8:30 a.m. in the Bill Oxford studio of the county city building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 11th, 2016, at 9 a.m. in room 112 of the county city building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447, or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on Five City TV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE.gov under Five City TV Video on Demand, or Five City TV on YouTube.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
Move in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Carries four to zero.
Okay, the Board of Commissioners is adjourned, and let's move on then to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one or minutes. Approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, September 27th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's Board of Equalization meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number three are public hearings. The first one is motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and this is for Calvary Community Church, Girl Scouts, Spirit of Nebraska, Emmanuel, Mary Bridge Radio, or My Bridge Radio, and St. Joseph Catholic Church.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing for comments on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Is there anyone to speak in support, opposition, or a neutral position? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and go on to correlating item four.
This is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Ammonson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. The next public hearing is proposed change in exemption status. This is for Chi Health, and this is for two parcels. Habitat for Humanity, Inc., Salvation Army Adult Rehab Center, and Harris Fraley VFW Post 131.
Okay, and I'll open the public hearing then for the change, proposed changes in exemption status. Anyone to speak in support, opposition, or a neutral position?
I'm recommending approval of removing these exemptions on all five parcels. Four of them have sold to taxable entities. The fifth one is one of the CHI parcels where they sold the, the building itself to a taxable entity and are leasing the ground underneath it to that taxable entity, so they'll have the land taxable that they're leasing to the for-profit, and the building, obviously, that's owned by the for-profit will be taxed.
Well, there's more money coming in.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Anybody else to speak? Okay, I'll close the public hearing in this.
Move approval of proposed change in exemption status.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the proposed changes in exemption status. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.[1734.16]
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number six is a late filed homestead exemption, and this is for Leona Grossman.
Mrs. Grossman made application and a letter to extend the filing deadline to July 20th. If you recall, every year, we have 15 or 20 of those that are allowed to extend to July 20th, as long as they haven't had that same exception in the prior year. Ms. Grossman met that criteria. It just took us a while to get the income statement and the whole package put together, but we've got everything we need now, so we're recommending approval of her homestead exemption for this year.
So this is not a chronic issue with her?
No, no. It's the first time with her, just to add some health issues, and getting all the pieces put together took some time.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the homestead exemption for Leona Grossman. Discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero. Number seven is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, not on agenda, may do so at this time.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero.